Okay, I just wanna again welcome everyone who is online now. And I know that even with more person coming on, currently I have fourteen person online. And people are coming into church, I feel good when people coming up there. I just said this. I tell you, we, we have a lot to learn and I don't know, I can't really speak for myself, I'm very excited about all the lessons that are going on. But this one in particular, I know that most of us who are from the Caribbean, we tend to struggle in certain areas. And this teaching will help us navigate through certain things. And what I ask of you guys, Virgins, is to allow yourself to be taught. The teacher. Some folks have the attitude that I knew it already and nothing is gonna change it. But if you know it already, that's good, but make sure that the evidence that you have to support what you know is right. If you have the evidence then, how can someone want to change it? And that's why we want to come together that weekend, get our reason together. And if you, for some reason, you have the evidence that the sky is always red, bring your evidence. And my evidence would be no, it's mostly blue. So we can sit and we can all grow together. You know someone I'm saying, Brother Elliot, we can grow together. And we have, what we will have is a more empty church. And that is what we are striving towards, I mean, healthy church. Right now, Church of God of prophecy, international, especially our northern, North America, which includes us. We are having teaching about planting healthy church, healthy church dynamics. We're tired of running around in circle with bad theology. Bad way of going about doing church. It's not getting us anywhere, we're just coming to church and going through the motion. We are not impacting, have an impact on the world at large. And we have to do something about it. And the leadership of the church is focusing on that. And we want to embrace that as a member of the church. You hear me time and time again talking about discipleship. Each and every one of us need to be discipled so that we can disciple someone. We need to be mentors that when someone comes in the church, a new convert, I can say, Brother Jones, this person is under your wing. If I put a person on a your wing, Brother Jones, if you're not going to Bible study and learning what it is to, to, to disciple someone, you know, you just go to church on Sunday. And I am gonna, I'm just being frank and open about it. We need to stop that ungodly behavior. If you are engaged in the work of God, be engaged. Stop giving him a defense. We have to stop. So thank you guys who have made it out tonight, both online and in person. And we're gonna get into this study. I, I should let you know that this study is pretty lengthy. And I'm not gonna violate the hour and a half that you guys give to me. So wherever I reach where time runs out, I'm gonna stop and pick up on it the next round. Is that okay? Because I want, what I want, when we say we are having like prayer meeting for an hour and Monday night it's an hour, that people can have that company. No, we are, I mean, if the spirit of God is evident to take over, not that we feel that it's a spirit to take over, because sometimes people do that and blame it on the spirit, the spirit gets a lot of bad name. But if the spirit takes over, even church, we want to keep church eleven to one and sometimes we go over. But if you go over a, a, a huge amount of time and then it's bad management of our time and then we say it's the spirit. We need to know that the prophet is the one that controls the city. So we have to work on those things. We can't do church in Canada as we did it in Jamaica or in the Caribbean. I grew up in a church, when you go church from ten o'clock in the morning to four o'clock. It cannot work in this country. We have to understand the culture and that's what is taught, that if you go to that area, you have to understand the culture and operate within that culture. The culture in Brunton is different from the culture in Scarborough. So we have to understand those dynamics and, and, and the Lord will, of the hearts, what we have our own work to do. So I know I'm gonna just recap as quickly as possible and then we'll go into this week's lesson. So not last week, because this all ties in. The week before, that was the twenty ninth of June, we did Romans one verse eighty, chapter three, and the passage.
Yeah, right? Okay, man. Okay, then. Okay.
Everyone is muted now, I mute everyone. So if you need to speak, you have to unmute Jamaica's, I'm hearing your private conversation. So I mute everyone from my end, I don't think you can unmute yourself. So you might have to type in the chat, but I see that then I can unmute you. Now, that week, we look at God reveals and executes wrath upon men, why God does that? That's what we, why God, a holy God, a good God, could reveal and execute wrath upon men? And we look at men in general are subject to God's wrath. Every one of us are subject to God's wrath, meaning God can reveal his wrath on any man. Whether you are Christians or not. And out of this study, I believe that some of us as Christians are actually living under the wrath of God. Another word for wrath is judgment. We know the final judgment day is coming, but as we progress through life, we're living under the wrath of God if we are not doing the things that God execute or, or have. And why he reject men in general is that men suppress their conscience. They, their conscience that is within them, they suppress it. And they suppress the thoughts of God. So that's one of the reasons he reveals his wrath, he send his wrath upon us. Men reject that which is outside of them. In this instance, it means men reject creation, they don't see God in creation. It's evident that God is in creation. The food, bear food in their season. The trees, the root is in the ground, it's not up in the air. Things are organized, it's well put together by an intelligent being. I mentioned to you that the sun, if it was zero, zero, zero point zero, zero, zero inches or seventy meter closer to earth, we would fry. God hold it in certain distance. Men refuse to acknowledge God in creation, so God reveals wrath upon man. Also, men do not honor God or give thanks. What men does they want to take praise for themselves? They, they bypass God, they don't want to give him the praise. So the Creator definitely is not happy that after creating everything out of nothingness, you can't give him the praise. You think your job is your qualification? You, you think so, it's, it's a normal thing for, for people. No, your job was created by God for you. And that's why some folks, because of the lack of understanding, they don't give back to God in the form of tithing and offering. Because they can't see that their job was given to them by God and God created. And because of the lack of knowledge, all people are perish. The, the, the last thing is that men become prideful and turn away from God. So this is, these areas, not last week, but the week before, points to why God reveals his wrath from heaven, those are the why. And last week we look at how, how he, he does it, how does he reveal this wrath? And when we hear of wrath, we know that it, it's bad things, the wrath of God, we think about the wrath of God. And we have one main wrath in the back of our mind, which is hell. Judgment and hell. And so we get caught up in this, that we believe that, you know what, the judgment is coming. We don't see we're living through the wrath of God in this certain day. We just know that the judgment is coming, when Jesus come and so forth, so forth. But this teaching shows that we are living under the wrath of God. It's not fire and bridge soul. How God goes about it is that he gave up men. Give them up to do as they will. Because they know that there is a God, they know that he's supposed to be worshiped. They knows everything and they continue although knowing, doing the things that this is God. So God just give up men to do as they will. And they don't even realize, because they are blind, they figure that, you know, I'm doing this. I'm not going to church, I don't believe in God and I'm just doing this and I'm okay. Look at my house, look at my car, look at my beautiful children. God gave you up to live as you will, you are under judgment. God gave up men over sexual impurity. Men with men, women with women, men with animals, men with objects, women with objects, women with animals. God give them up to do what they want to do. That's they're living under God's judgment. Men, God gave up men over shameful loss. The more you lost after whatever and lost after the things that this freezes God. And because you are your free will, you choose thing over God. He's not gonna force you, it's your choice, he doesn't have robots. So he gives you, he gives up men to deprive mind and then he got assured final judgment and wrath. So that is what we have been looking at over the past two weeks. We started with Romans, like a month now, Romans is gonna run for over a year. And I don't want to rush through Romans to say, hey, we did John, we studied John and we studied Romans. No, we just want each and every person to understand and be honest. You're not gonna remember everything you have learned here. But you were exposed to it. So in the moment, you know that it's not right for you to suppress the truth of God, in the moment you know it. You might not be able to live here and articulate it to someone unless you do further studies and go over the notes and make it a part of you. But just being in Bible study, you can hear the teaching, you hear the evidence and it builds you spiritually. You become more spiritually material and that's what I'm hoping for with each and every one of voices. So at this time, I'm gonna ask Sister Adasa to read for us the lesson that we're gonna be talking about tonight, it's Romans two, verses one to sixteen. I'm not sure if she will read it from the NIV, would it be the NIV Sister Adasa? Oh, Sister Adasa, probably she cannot unmute herself, but we're doing, we're sending now Sister Adasa. Oh, that's very, okay. Okay, you can try now, Sister Adasa.
That's right. Okay, let me go find my Bible here.
With the NIV?
Yes, sir, yes. Okay, God's righteous judgment. You therefore have no excuse. You who pass judgment on someone else, for at whatever point you judge another, you are condemning yourself. Because you, you who pass judgment do the same things. Now we know that God's judgment against those who do such things is based on truth. So when you, a mere human being, pass judgment on them and yet do the same things, do you think you will escape God's judgment? Or do you show contempt for the riches of his kindness? Forbearance and patience, not realizing that God's kindness is intended to lead you to repentance. But because of your stubbornness and your unrepentant heart, you are throwing up wrath against yourself for the day of God's wrath, when his righteous judgment will be revealed. God will repay each person according to what they have done. To those who by persistence is doing good, seek glory, honor and immortality. He will give eternal life. But for those who are self-seeking and who reject the truth and follow evil, there will be wrath and anger. There will be trouble and distress for every human being who does evil, first for the Jew, then for the Gentiles. But glory, honor and peace for everyone who does good, first for the Jew, then for the Gentile. For God does not show favoritism. All who sin apart from the law will also perish apart from the law. And all who sin under the law will be judged by the law. For it is not those who hear the law who are righteous in God's sight, but it is those who obey the law who will be declared righteous. Indeed, when Gentiles who do not have the law do by nature things required by the law, they are a law for themselves, even though they do not have the law. They show that the requirements of the laws, the law are written on their hearts. Your conscience is also bearing witness and your thoughts sometimes accusing them and at other times even defending them. This will take place on the day when God judges people's secrets through Jesus Christ as my gospel declares. And this is taken from Romans chapter two, verses one to sixteen.
Thank you very much, Sister Adasa. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Yes. This week's lesson, the theme or title is God's case against the moralist. The moralist, God's case against the moralist. Can anyone tell me who is a moralist? I, I would like this to also be as interactive as is popular. Just, but just don't be scared, just say what you think a moralist is.
Moralists are like that, you put a person who tells you to do good, but not to be that's right. No one ever see God, I believe. Yeah, I pursue, do you like that?
Okay, thank you, Brother Deacon. On, is there anyone online on the, something about who they think a moralist is? Don't be shy. Okay, all right. So let, let me get into the study and we all will come to a clear understanding of who a moralist is. However, this study is an excellent study on judging, criticizing others, the judgment of God, self-righteousness, the legalistic, the legalist. This is a good study for those person. Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you, dear, for reminding me that. Okay, so I'm gonna try and give everyone the ability to unmute themselves, but please don't abuse it. Okay, so you now have the ability, you're all muted, but you have the ability to unmute yourself. Please don't unless you are gonna be saying something because it generates a feedback. And I was asking you guys to comment, not remember that I had taken away that privilege from you. So, yes, so this is a good study on judging, you know that sometimes we judge one another in the church. Yes, so this is good. You will understand why you should not be judging each other. It also deals with judgment of the Eden and answer the question so often asked, what will happen to the Eden, to the person who never hears about Jesus Christ? That is a punchline for a lot of people. What about those who don't hear about Jesus? You think God who created everything out of the nothingness would not make a provision for that? Are you saying that flipping, that there might be people who not hear about Jesus? So now he's gonna judge them, what a mean God is that? That's what they're saying, when you say that, but God, but you will come to realize that those people will be judged. And we did a study last week as to why they, they got judged there, because they see, they know of God through nature and through the conscience is there, but they suppress it. So God don't make mistake. So that's not a good line of argument, you know? But as I said, this study is tied to God's case, it's gotta have a case against the moralist. Verse one covers who is a moralist, verse two to five, the judgment of God based on truth, perfect justice in dealing with the moralist. Verses six to ten, the judgment of God is according to deed or your work, eternal reward or eternal punishment. There's no imagery. Verses eleven to fifteen, the judgment of God does not show favoritism, absolute impartiality. And the last verse is sixteen, the judgment of God is to be executed by Jesus Christ and his gospel. So can someone quickly read verse one for me as we go in greater detail of the study? Someone please read verse one. Go ahead, Sister Jones.
You therefore have no excuse. You whom pass judgment on someone else, for at whatever, sorry, for at whatever point you judge another, you are condemning, condemning yourself because you who pass judgment do the same thing.
Thank you. So in the eyes of scripture, a moralist is a person who lives a moral life, that's a good life and a clean life. But there's a big but. He or she judges others because they do not live as he or she thinks they should live. So a moralist is not a bad person in that sense that you live a clean, holy life, but it gets messy when you start judging others because they don't live like you. And remember, we all are sin. And we all have this in nature in us. And the scriptures say, if you say you are without sin, you are a big, big liar. And the cheap of God is sadly. So that's a problem with the moralist. The person is moral, upright, good, decent and honorable. The moralist has strong values and standard and principle. He is well disciplined and able to control his or her life. That's the moralist. He lives just as everyone thinks he or she should, knows the right from wrong and liveth. He knows how to behave and does it. In the eyes of society, he is just what a person should be. A good neighbor, an excellent worker and provider, an ideal citizen. That's all a moralist. The only problem, as I said, the moralists know, just don't remain moral, they start to criticize others. So note two things, the moralist judges others. And moralist is inexcusable, just is noted in the scripture. Because you therefore have no excuse. The, the, the moralists have no excuse. Don't think you're gonna get away itself when you're doing the wrong stuff because you're a moron. If you're doing stuff like criticizing, putting down other people, then you're in great danger. The moralist judges other, the word judge means to criticize, to find fault or to condemn. This is a terrible flaw of a moralist. That's a flaw. Any person becomes a moralist when he set himself up as a judge of others. At any time, we judge another person, we are declaring that we are living by some rule that other person is not living by. We are more moral than someone else. We are better than someone else. We are superior than someone else. We are more righteous than someone else. We are more acceptable to God than someone else. Judging others is saying, I am right, Brother Jones is not. I succeed, but Sister Brown fail. Therefore, look at me, ignore Sister Brown. Draw near to me, shun, Brother Deacon, uh, on, esteem me, big meal. Put me on a pedestal, would put down Sister Brown. A fool me would condemn Sister Dog. Be my friend, but we Be my friend, but we draw from the roughies. Very simple. Judging others raises self and lowers other. Exhales self and debase others. And in the eyes of God, this is wrong. It's not simple, though, just don't do it and figure that, oh, it's not, something is not wrong, it's wrong. It's wrong in the eyes of God, it is sin. You know what sin is? Sin is missing the mark. Sin is missing the mark. God didn't call us to judge anyone. He is a judge that can do his work. It is, it is being full of self righteousness. Self righteousness. That is one of the things that is eating away at our Christian life. You know, I, 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 I touched, there was an instance in another church where the deacon hands out the communion cup, the things, you know, the, the plate and so on. And a regular church member touched it and he was reprimanded, you're not supposed to touch it. Because I am righteous to touch it, but you can't. That's all, that's the mentality of some of us. And we have to move past that. When we believe that we run people out of the church and we become stumbling block for people coming in the church and God is gonna judge you, that's why when you believe that you are under the wrath of God, although you are, you're professing to be a Christian, because you are doing the things that this priest has done. You're committing sin. And that's why we don't, we don't need to categorize and analyze sin. Adultery, going outside of your march to be with someone else is a big sin in the eyes of everyone. But when you call Sister so and so and Brother so and so and criticize somebody in the church, you go, see, I, I just talk, I talk, it's nothing, no. And when you tell lies, it's a quiet lie to get out of problems, it's a sin, it's a same sin. We need to adjust some figures on your tax return to get a little more money, it's sin. So let, let us see sin as missing the mark of the glorious standard of God and stop looking at what is at its feet now, it's just a must from all, it's sin. So it's being put of self righteousness, pride, arrogance, it sets self up as a moralist and it makes, it, it makes a person judgmental and critical. They have a critical spirit and judge everyone. The Bible said in Matthew seven verse one, judge not that he might not be judged. The moralist, as according to the scripture, is inexcusable, have no excuse. And he condemns himself because he does the very same thing. You might not be, the person you're judging might be doing something that you don't do. Yeah, but you sin still because you do something else. And you sin by the very nature that you are alive. Because the sin nature is in all of us. So don't look at the particular sin that the person is indulging and judge the person because you of yourself sin. You sin without even knowing. You sin in your thoughts. Psalm nineteen verse twelve, I think, think about the sin that is lurking in your heart. You can't even discern the sin that is lurking in your heart. So we don't want to go around criticizing people or fellow brethren, correct? You criticize the same person that you intend to go to heaven to live with. Why don't you pray for that person? And if you genuinely love the person, you pray about it and ask God to give you an opportunity where you can, um, encourage this person rather than judgment, rather than pointing fingers. And this sin in the church is pointing fingers at that way. And we are going to go to heaven, the wrath of God is upon you. The judgment of God is in your life. No wonder the church sometimes seems so weak. No wonder we can cast out demons and heal the sick. Not, I mean, through the empowerment of the Holy Spirit. Why, I, I marvel at this, that Apostle Peter could be walking down Toronto in the three o'clock, not midday sun over his head, sideways, throwing to set and his shadow goes over a layman on the street and the man is healed. Why could Apostle Peter build with the same Holy Spirit as I and you? And he's able, God is able to do that through, and why it's not been done in this day and age? Because we miss the mark and we come on a so much doctrines and teachings and we are not genuine to the bone as it comes to the work of God. And we need to look into ourselves. The church is powerful, it's a body of Christ, but we have to do our part in our spiritual material and how we live in the church. So the, the moralist is excusable, as I said. He condemns himself because he does the very same thing. He fails just as the man whom he judges sin. Scripture says, Romans two verse one, you who pass judgment do the same thing. In God's eyes, sin is a matter of the heart and mind. That's which side, not just an act. Then in the matter of the heart and your mind, you think about it. You, you ponder over it before the action takes place. The thought and desire makes a person just as guilty as the act itself. The thought and the desire to do whatever is make the person as guilty as the act. God knows that many would carry out their thoughts if they had the courage or opportunity. What you're thinking about, what the enemy deposits in your mind, how you think, how you dwell on it and so on. If the opportunity presents itself, you would go along with it. You cannot stop a thought from poking in your mind. And I use the analogy to say you cannot stop a bird from flying over your head. There's no way you can stop that. But you can stop that bird from building a mess in your head. So when those thoughts come to your mind, you rebuke them. Have the presence of mind that when an ungodly thought, unrighteous thought comes in your mind, say, I will rebuke you in the name of Jesus. And you capture that thought and turn it to the obedience of God. We hold that to ourselves and our spiritual growth. God knows the heart, the mind, and the thought. Then whether thoughts in the mind or acting public comes short of God's glory. And that's why Jesus said, you commit adultery when you're lost, just look at the man or look at the woman and just you have already committed adultery in your heart. Because it starts in your heart. And if you dwell on that thought, you have already committed adultery. All stand guilty before God. Therefore, the moralist, the person who judges, is as guilty as the one being judged. It is for this reason that we are not to judge. Christians, children of God, we are not to judge. We are not to judge, criticize, and find fault with others. Leave that for the unsaved. Leave that for the heathen, the pagans. Leave that, we, that is not to be among us. And have the presence of mind that when those things start creeping, you know, thoughts, we rebuke them. Matthew seven verse three says, why do you look at the speck of sardus in your brother's eye and paying no attention to the plank in your own eye? Think about this. The points does not mean that the judic, the judicial system of the state are wrong, or that discipline is not to be exercised within churches, organization or the church. Culture teaches that both justice and discipline are to be exercised by men. What culture mean is this, we are not to go around criticizing and finding fault with each other and putting each other down when one of us fails. The Christian pathway is a journey. And we all have one common enemy who want to see us fail. And Satan will not stop attacking the Christians. If you're familiar, you know how the computer system operates with firewall because of viruses that will attack your hardware. You have to buy these, um, virus protection and put it on your computer. Because the virus is just gonna be knocking, 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 not stopping the very moment your, um, your, your T D X, your virus protection is served. Wow. Your computer gets corrupted, you lose all your data, it's compromised and so on. One separate, don't forget your point. So just with us, Deacon, listen, remember, spirit never tires. Satan can never get tired. He's gonna keep knocking at your firewall and the very moment your spiritual health just a bit down, think that goes to. To the spirit that's in mine. Go ahead, Deacon, you wanted to say something.
Saying that, um, we're so corrupt that someone who virus protect, that we're in a virus, virus protect inside from them. The God double virus.
I, 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 I believe, I believe in you. Uh, yeah, so the words of corrupt that when you die of corrupt, the virus, um, protection is a virus to buy. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was gonna say something, but it might offend someone. Now you're thinking what I was gonna say, yeah. I was gonna say, that's why I use apple. I don't need virus protection. So instead, we are to reach out and try to redeem and help others. Imagine what a different world this would be if all tongues, all tongue lashing were stopped. If all criticism and fault finding, if everyone reached out and tried to redeem and save those who fail. Let's think about it, let's think about this local church. If everyone was to have this attitude, and this goes back to what, love? If we truly love each other, you know? We would try to do this, Galatians six verse one to two, the brothers and sisters. If anyone is caught in a slip, you who live by the spirit should restore that person gently, but watch yourself or you also may be tempted. Carry each other's burden. We should be carrying each other's burden and in this way you will fulfill the law of Christ. The law of Christ is what we need to work towards fulfilling. The law of Christ, not the Old Testament written law, the law of Christ. We're going to the second of editing, which is the judgment of God is based on truth. True, and I want to ask someone to read verses two to five, Romans two, verse two to five. Anyone online or in verse?
Uh, Romans two verses two to five. Uh, now we know that God's judgment against those who do such things is based on truth. So when you, a mere human, being passed, uh, judgment on them and yet do the same things, do you think you will escape God's judgment? Or do you show contempt for the riches of His kindness? Forbearance and patience, not realizing that God's kindness is intended to lead you to repentance. But because of, he's a verse five, right, yes, but because of your stubbornness and your unrepentant heart, you are storing up wrath against yourself for the day of God's wrath, when His righteous judgment will be revealed.
Okay, thank you, Lady Minister. Um, I just saw that there was two comments in the chat. One was from the Lady Minister. Um, based on the definition mentioned of a moralist, how can you tell the difference between a moralist and a Christian? So the difference, um, Brother Dominic, is that the moralist judge and criticize. The Christian who's moral, um, doesn't judge, doesn't criticize, supports someone with a fear. But the, the moralist now is the one that criticized. And they say, oh, Brother Dominic, I am wholly model you because I eat twice a day and eat three days a day. You know, there's something they, they, they have to say. All right, so, um, Sister Trinies, I have a question about the morality of a Christian and if they are never to adjust situation or authority, if they are judging. But still, they are helping, correct? I, I, I get what you're saying, Sister Trinies. So judging is when you don't have all the information. And you are not speaking directly to repeat the person. So you don't have the information and you're not going to a pastor, the pastor, um, at the look, the glance of your shoes, you haven't seen that shoes in two months. But you just look at it, you, you just look at it and you go off and say, awesome, I'm creating shoes. You know, I'm just trying to, to, to build a, a, a analogy here. So that is it now. I, I do have a concern, I, I, I thought about the history of Sister Trinies. Sister Trinies, I'm not judging you if you are bearing the wrong fruit. Because by the food you shall know them. So if I go to Brother Cosme and he did something, he, he's bearing a particular tool, a food, he's being, you know, by his action. And because I love him so much, I go to him, but now again, how do I approach it? Did I pray over it? Thank God, and approaching with love, say, Brother Cosme, I'm gonna say something to you. Uh, I hope you don't feel bad that I am saying this to you. I'm saying it for a place of love, I haven't said it to anyone else, I need it, and I'm coming to you. That we are rich, we're come to, by, sorry. You know? Yeah. So what, you, you went to him and you went to him in a loving way. You don't come to myself. Everyone's very real about virtue. Everyone's very real one, Richard. Or something that is gonna hurt his feeling, I'm saying, it's all about, oh, we yeah, embarrassing in public or something, all we go about. And then when you talk to him about whatever it is, you hold him accountable and he, he, he is spiritually healthy. You say to you, say, I'm Phil, Mr. Brown. You know, yeah, really trouble in that area. And can you help me, let us sometime pray together and sometimes just check on me and, and, and find out if I still have that shirt on the closet to wear and always say. You know, the, just keep in touch. So then, that's how I look at it, Sister Trinies, did I, did I address it? In a way that helps you?
I understand, but um, I'm trying to figure out like when it, when there's a difference between having a standard and morals, like, I feel like a lot of times the church and we as Christians, we get called judgmental. And to me, I look at it with some things as having a certain standard. So when, when do you know you're actually doing it in a right way to say, well, you're upholding a certain standard and you're not being judgmental? Cause sometimes I get in a crossroad with that. Like a conversation that I had with someone before, I think I'd mentioned it to you where a friend of mine literally during a conversation at lunch said, that's why people don't like you all from Church of God of Prophecy. And I guess it's because they felt we carry this certain stigma, like we think we're so holy or something of that effect. So when do you know that you're just upholding a standard from being a moralist or being judgmental?
I get you, but at the same time, maybe she had experienced something um, particular from the church or from someone within the church. So she could be referring to an experience she had and moreover, I can, I do understand standard. But we have to be careful. The standard can be called legalistic. We're legalistic. And we're not supposed to be legalistic. The Bible says those who are led by the spirit are the children of God. It's not the rules that the church come up with unless it's biblically supported. I know it's kind of or something, what do you say pastor? Yes, but it's the spirit, where the spirit is, there's freedom. And the Bible then, they don't use its freedom to commit sin. But the rules, I, I mean, I should not be telling where a face is, not to go to St. God this Friday down by Toronto. Coming down the place Friday night, can hardly wake up Saturday morning. And then come on church and suddenly come preach. As a pastor, I'm not supposed to be telling that this spirit that lives in him to be leading him, this is that's wrong, things they used to do, you don't do it anymore. So when you have these rules set up in church, the church become legalistic. And then it drives people away. We are here to bring souls to win souls for Christ. And I, I've repeated, I've said this before. It was a, a, something that was said to us at one training with Dr. Pratt, a workshop. He went and he planted a church in a job infested area. Who came prostitute and all that. And one Sunday, church was going on a prostitute aiming with nothing to hide, you don't need to use your imagination. But she's unsafe. She's not regenerated. She's not born again. And one of the deacons or minister come to the bishop and said, should I put her out? And the bishop said, why? She's here. She's here. So guess what? Yes, come as you are. No, the difference is, is this a sister who has been in the church for a while? Been taught? They do the Holy Spirit and engage and so on, would come in like that? You still need to not be harsh, you don't know what's happening, but their spiritual attack over there. But yes, men are creatures of sin. But maybe in those instant, we need to curb our sin. But the soul of a man is more important than our self. So we have to, we are in tension, we're stretched, we're in the middle. As how we approach evangelism and the rules we have in church. Those who are led by the spirit are the children of God. I hope I didn't correct you.
Um, uh. Can witness into um a singer talking to someone who is not safe? Um, going back to the question that the sister mentioned about at work. Sometimes you're in a conversation with someone trying to help them to know the Lord. And they basically use that as a, as a, as, as a weapon. And turn it around and you just say, because you, you are a Christian and because you go to church, you think we're better than we think we're better than them. But it's a cop out they use to, to, to not want, to accept what they know is right.
Okay. Yeah. Alright, I hope that's a discussion we can continue to have, looking to and see. Uh, you know, and we can probably look at the scripture that says that uh, those who are led by the spirit, it's all about the spirit. The Lord leads us and she. So um Lady Minister Dominic read verses two to five, and we're gonna look at the judgment of God. This is the only living and true God. His judgment is according to truth. God's judgment will be executed in perfect justice. The word truth means true as opposite to fall. It means that um, what it means really is what actually exists. What actually happens, what actually to please. God judgment is perfectly lost, except exactly, I should say, what it should be, nothing more, nothing less. That is what God judgment is based on truth. The Bible says in first Samuel fifteen verse seven, the Lord does not look at things people look at. People look at the outward appearance, but the Lord looks at the heart. God knows the truth, the old truth and nothing but the truth. Therefore, when he judge, it is according to truth. His judgment will be perfect, conforming exactly to our deeds, conforming to our work. It will match our deeds perfectly. Note these four points, the moralist, the one that is a little bit more about judging things he will escape. Because you know, they think I have themself, yourself righteous. The moralist think God is too good to punish. The moralist thinks God is basically good. Sorry, not God, man. Is basically good. The moralist pardons his art against the judgment of God. These four points, let us look a little bit deeper into them. Moralist think he will escape. He think his offense is much greater. For he is like all other men. His offense is much greater, we're saying. For he's like all other men, sinful and short of the glory of God. So his offense to God is greater because he knows the truth, he knows right. But he doesn't see that he's like all other men. He criticized and judged those who whose failure are discovered and exposed. He thinks he will escape, he forgets that God sees the inner recesses of the human heart. You, you could be a very good actor in church and you can trick the pastor unless the Holy Spirit be next to him and other elders in the church. But God sees the inner recesses of the human heart and that God will judgment not only for their deeds but for their thoughts. Not only your deeds, for your thoughts, for the loss of the flesh, the loss of the eyes and the pride of life. Martin twenty-three, verse thirty-three says, you snake, you road of vipers. How will you escape being condemned to hell? The moralist, the second point, there's four points, the moralist thinks God is too good to punish. When he, that is a moralist, thinks of God, he thinks of the richness of God's goodness, that is his kindness, that is grace, that is love. Not thinking about the rights of God. He's thinking one sidedly. He thinks of the richness of God's forbearance, that is, is holding back, abstaining and controlling his justice. He thinks of God's long suffering, that is, is suffering a long time, being patient and slow in judging sin. God, of course, is all this and much more. What the moralist fails to see is that God's goodness is not a blank key or blank spec for sin. God's goodness does not give a license to sin. God's goodness does not condone sin, nor any courage or authorized sin. God's goodness does not indulge sin. And God goodness do not overlook sin. So because I'm a moralist, I have good moral qualities and standards. But I'm a moralist because I'm just criticizing, but I'm not feeling that part of me. So because there's this part that I think is good, God will overlook the little sin in the door. Because I'm such a good Christian. That's where that mess. God's goodness is to lead men to repentance, not to sin. The fact that God will forgive sin to store men to seek forgiveness and to please God. If a man goes out and sin, if any one of us goes out and sin, thinking that God will just overlook and forgive. He is despising, mocking, ridiculing God's goodness. Not very before. God will forgive him. God will forgive you. Okay. In other words, okay for you to do this thing, God is love and caring, he understands. And when we start thinking like that, we're, we're sitting ourselves under the judgment of God. And then we wonder why certain things is happening now, like we are under judgment. The person who does that is taking God's goodness and making it a shank, a mockery, a joke, a thing of indulgence. The man who despises God's goodness, who sins, thinking God will just overlook and forgive his sin. That person is wrong. If any of us are thinking or think, or tendence to think that way tonight, you know that it is wrong. Don't open that door in your life. You are mistaken. God not, does not just overlook and forgive sin. He does not condone, he does not indulge, nor give license to sin. God will judge that person and the judgment will be according to the truth. First John three verse seven to eight said, dear children, do not let anyone lead you astray. The one who does what is right is righteous as, just as he is righteous. The one who does what is sinful is of the devil. Because the devil has been sinning from the beginning. The reason the son of man appeared is to destroy the devil's work. So if we start doing the sinful things, especially knowingly, you know, we are oppressing the father of sin, the Satan, and we don't want that to happen. The third point is that a moralist think men is basically good. He thinks that man can be good enough for God to accept. I am so self righteous, don't accept me. I'm so righteous, don't accept me. God will not accept where the face because where the face is, drive over the sea doing. He thinks that look for the good in man and that within each man is good enough for God to accept. The moralist thinks that God's goodness accept a man's good work. Good thoughts, good behavior, good feeling, good nature, good tendencies. God, of course, is pleased. Don't get me wrong, God, of course, is pleased whether good is in man. But what the moralist fail to see is that God's goodness is perfect. It cannot accept any imperfect work. Any whole thoughts, any evil behavior, any ugly feeling, any corrupt nature, any sinful urges. God can only accept perfection. No man is perfect. Not in nature, thoughts or behavior. Therefore, all men are unacceptable to God. No man is good enough to be acceptable to God, no matter how good he is. The goodness of God is to lead men to repentance. To turn man to God for righteousness, not to declare man's self righteousness. Listen, we can only be accepted to God through Christ. So I'm not saying man will never be accepted to God, but only through Christ. Most people think that God will accept them, they never dreamed that God would reject them. What they fail to see is that God's judgment is based upon truth. The truth of what a person's thoughts and motives are and what is really within a person's mind and heart. God's judgment is based upon truth of a person's imperfect nature and behavior. Romans one verse twenty-one to twenty-two. We went through that previously, although they knew God, they neither glorify him as God, nor give thanks to him, but their thinking become futer and their foolish hearts were hardened, although they claim to be wise, they become fools. The fourth point is that a moralist hardens his heart against the judgment of God. He refuses to repent. The judge, why should I repent? I'm a good person. I'm good. I do this, I do that. I do this, I do that, and it brings a standard of the good. He just cannot accept the fact that he is not good enough for God to accept and that God's goodness and love would never condemn him. In fact, God must judge. Because God is love. As love, he must straighten out all the injustices on earth. He must right the wrongs and correct all the injustices of men. He must judge men with a perfect and righteous judgment. The man who hardens his heart and refuses to repent stores up more and more wrath against himself in the day of judgment. The fact is fairly silly. Just think how terrible it is for a man to rebel against God's goodness. A man, a worm like us, rebelling against God's goodness, the divine, God of the universe. Think about it. He has none, has the glorious privilege of knowing God's goodness. He hears God's goodness proclaimed day by day, week by week, month by month, year by year. However, he despises God's goodness, refusing to repent and rejecting God's goodness time after time. His rejection, his rejection is bound to store wrath against himself. The judgment is bound to be greater than the judgment upon a person who never had the privilege of hearing about the goodness of God. So many of us who were born in church, go to church almost every day of our life and we refuse to change some of our behaviors. We are building up wrath for ourselves and judgment day. And our punishment is gonna be greater than the guy who doesn't go to church or who does not believe in the Lord. It's gonna be more for us because we know it. Okay, I just saw a message because Sister Brown was saying, "Good point, when you made your point, man, so." That someone recognized you making good points. Um, the John three, verse thirty-six said, "Whosoever believes in the Son has eternal life. Whosoever believes in the Son, the Son of God, has eternal life. But whosoever rejects the Son will not see life, for God's wrath remain on him." So something came to mind when I saw this. The last section of the verse said, "For God's wrath remain on him." That person will not see light. However, they rejected the Son of God, that's why. But the mere fact that God's wrath remain on him, that is why he will not see light. So if we are not careful and we are living under the wrath of God, we could call ourselves Christians from now until tomorrow morning. We will not see light because wrath of God is on us. So we have to now start praying that prayer, asking for forgiveness. And if we are under his wrath, show us how we need to, what we need to do. Surrender to him, pray, reach out to him. And that's why, because of the lack of knowledge, we did not understand these teachings and so forth. That is why some might hear on that last day, depart from me. I know you're not, because you have been living under my wrath, you have been disobedient, you have been doing all these things that a child of God is not supposed to do. So we need to really walk in the spirit, we need to take our Christianity very seriously. It's not a walk in the park. But we can grow and mature spiritually only because the Spirit of God will enable us, but we have to engage the Spirit. It's not gonna be a magic wand where you come into church and a wand just wave and you run up and down in the church on Sunday and you speak in diverse tongues. But if I go in a car park and my car hits your car, I'm not gonna see that love. Or in the week at work, how do you behave? When you go home, how do you talk to your spouse? How do you talk to your children? You see, these these Christian attitudes, attributes need to be a part of all person. We need to live it out day by day. We don't need to come to church to display that someone can repent and say, "Well, Sister Brown's spiritual enough." Yeah, man, she's spiritual. And they only insist on, but it was somebody step on her door and it's not, it's spiritual, but that different spirit than me. We have to be who we are in Christ all the time. This is a wrong picking up, yeah. Well, a lot of much time we have, we have like ten minutes.
Yes, um, earlier you mentioned about, um, somebody that is born in the church and grew up in the church and, you know. I don't, I I I'm just scared. It's yeah, level of punishment for that person who is in the church all the way. And in and out, like one foot in, one foot out, going on coming in, going on coming in, but they are there and still not being honored before God.
Well, you know, I can't be definitive in my answer, but looking at the old picture, that this person have been exposed to the same goodness of God. And for some reason, this person have not died in and still have an eye outside. Because you think about it in a first step, when you fall in love with someone, everybody else doesn't matter, the person you focus on. So if you fall in love with Jesus, you truly love him. You say, "If you love me, you cheat my commandments." But you are on the fence. You're not growing spiritually. You're not following, eh, the shepherd. God placed a genuine church of a genuine shepherd. God placed that person there. You as a sheep need to allow the shepherd to take care of you. But if you resist that shepherd and you're doing your own thing and you're you're not growing and then you you you're like the weight of the sea back and forth. You sit on the fence, you're divided in yourself. Your body is in the church, but your mind is on the outside and sometimes you vary off there and so forth. Now, you are appeared, if that was one of your child who just miss the air, she is out, you know, sometime you don't see her or he for some days or whatever. And you have another child who is always there, humble, respectful. Tell me what you have done. You've been judging this situation. You love both of them now. But one continued to be disrespectful, don't listen to you and so on. Oh, you have a tendency to hurt. Remember, we're not God, so we can't do this thing. But from a human perspective, and we can use the physical to understand the spiritual.
I'll use my own son as an example. Um, I remember when my son was seven years old, I mean, six years old, I mean, told him that he wants the birthday. And I said, "It's okay." I mean, yes, mommy, I'm saying a long time, you know. And he said, "I want the birthday." And I said, "Well, if you want the birthday, you have to go and talk to the pastor." I mean, my son has been in the church all his life. And now he's twenty-five, twenty, twenty, twenty-two. My son walk away from the church. And it had the tendency to want to get me to pull him up, in a way. Because I know I can't.
Oh, he's an adult?
You know, I know I can't do that.
Yeah. What you do, you pray for him.
I'm praying for him. And it really tours my heart to know that he knows the right thing. And at this age, he's walking away.
Yeah, just pray for him. We wrestle up against flesh and blood with principalities and powers. And I'm an example of that. I'm a church baby, church of God of prophecy daily. My mother was so involved in church, their church in Jamaica. Colonel's rich like Marvin Pass, some of the street, my mother preached out. She wasn't a licensed babysitter, so on, but she's a devoted woman of God. She brought me to the church. My story is that I was actually given to the Lord when I was a baby because I was dying, literally dying. And she was pregnant between, I was supposed to be lost. She fell down the stairs, I rolled to the bottom. And she had two previous pregnancies there, just soon, and she lost them. And some of you know that my name's God, my pet name. The acronym means God's own son. Because having not lost a baby, he said, "This must be God's own son." And when I was born, when I reached age one, I was so sick, I went back to creeping. There's a point where my eyes was fixed to die. And she was encouraged to go to Obi-Wan and to walk back with half a machine to her grave, my grandfather's grave or whatever. My mother doesn't do anything. She said, "If it is his will, it's God's will, or he can live that in life. If it's not, he's to let him die." Not until the Holy Spirit, your umshun came down upon her, that she was able to refute the demons. She grew up to be a minister, I do even know that. But I know I got saved early, baptized through the Holy Spirit. And then the enemy lied to me in my teenage and I went back in the world for over twenty-odd years. And when I came to Canada at the age of thirty-eight, I mean, dedicated my life. My mother has been praying all these years, over twenty-odd years, to don't stop. And when she arrived, she's asking not to say this. Well, she said it and probably she'll, and sorry that she said it. She said at one point, "God, I heard, he was tired itself." So, I mean, I'm not being bashful, but look at me now. I'm so glad I'm a child. My mother prayed for me. She lived the life before me. And she waited until I was, when I was installing the pastor and she saw me a few months after. I was installed the ninth of January twenty-twenty-two. I saw the tenth of April twenty-twenty-two. And I said, "Mama, I can't keep it till when I get vacation again," at the time I was with the TDC. Yes, I went to visit her again to bury her. She saw her prior being answered. So don't give up. Pray for them, don't, don't, don't force them, because that's what the enemy want, that they turn off and shut off from you. Just pray for them. And you can pray for God is sorry to hit them, because God is sorry for life. Some of us or some of them won't change until they hit their mark. I didn't change until God caught my attention and I died into the church, everywhere, put me, tied me, everywhere. And I thank God that you gave me opportunity, that I can sit before you now and express the goodness of God. You know? So this lesson has five intentions and I was able to do two. So we're gonna take up on this, we have one minute and forty seconds to go. We're gonna take up on this next week, where we look at God's judgment according to deeds, deeds or works, it's not, um. And these these, uh, judgment is eternal reward or punishment. The 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 rewards are gonna be eternal as well as the punishment. That's one point. The second point is the judgment of God does not show favoritism. It's absolutely impartial and the judgment of God to be executed by Jesus Christ on his gospel. So next week we'll start from verse six to sixteen. And, um, I don't want to overload your brain with too much. But I'll suggest that we read each chapter, um, reread it and, um, pray over it and ensure in our best by our best ability that we don't fall into the category of a moralist. And remember, the behaviors of a moral person is good, good standard, holy, living a good life. But the problem surface when you start criticizing and judging others. That I am better than you, because look at me and the path the way you. Yeah, husband is a child of God. He's adapted in the same way. He has different struggles from me. We all have our struggles and we need to come alongside each other and help each other, be a family. Let us get serious about our salvation. The signs of the time is everywhere. I'm not trying to manipulate everyone, but what I'm seeing now, was it around ten, fifteen years ago? And the Bible has been fulfilled. Nature is mourning. The floodwaters in Texas, the earthquake all over the place, the wars and the rumors of wars. It's all, the Bible must be fulfilled. Um, so we're gonna close up in prayer, but I have a few prayer requests here. And we all, I want us all to pray over these requests. Um, we wanna pray for Sister May's daughter, their name. She be having a procedure more and maybe that is in preparation for her, her daughter. Uh, we should lead to it. And, uh, we're gonna ask God to be the one performing the procedure. Anything can happen. The body is so fragile. Life is so brief. We wrestle up against flesh and blood, the principalities and powers and rulers of the dark world, wicked spirit, nine hundred and fifty. So we wanna pray for her. We wanna pray for River. Everyone remember what River is? Yeah, yeah. River has a procedure to do as well. Yeah, the river has a procedure to do as well. And I can't discut it today on the air. But just pray for River that he will receive divine healing and be fully restored. Um, this is young lady I, I pulled about who I don't want to name. She's happened by the study tonight, she was last weekend by the study. Um, but she did a procedure yesterday. And we just wanna pray for a speedy recovery and pray that the death Lucifer will not be the one that will beg or grieve. We are just stopped by, let's look to pray for her goddess friend, mother who has lost her son. But these are mother grieving at this time, and I can I, I, I can empathize with her as one who lost a child. I understand how it feels. Um, also continue to pray for Sister Jones' daughter, Nicole. And that's, with this I have, remember Sister Paulette Jones. She, last thing I heard, she was in the hospital. And she said she was somebody there for a while, let us be open prior. Um, for her, there was a Shatine or not yet to be more writings, Sister Gray, Sister Harris. Uh, Sister, yeah, I mentioned Sister Paulette Jones. Sister Chaplin as well, she's going through a rough time. Sister General Morgan, she was here on Sunday. We have a lot of people that we need to pray for. Okay, so let us all just go into a concert of prayer now. Trust in God, knowing for sure that when we pray, he hears our prayer. And not only does he hear what he answered, especially when, uh, we pray in accordance with it. Remember Russell, Avis, Sister Juliet's husband. Pray for her, pray for him, I should say, I pray for her too, because it's hectic on her to be. Uh, she's still active in a role at the church. And, uh, I mean, she's under a lot of pressure, but she's still a babe herself. Now, so let us just go to the Lord and pray Sister Williams. Uh, pray for her, she's still giving her treatment, uh, different type. But we want to pray that God will continue to sustain her limits of her circumstance. And if there's anyone that I forgot to mention, I pray that the Holy Spirit will take care of that person. Remember also Sister Carla Williams' mother, she has not been well for a good time. Let us pray. Eternal God, you're the God of the first. You're the God that loves and conditionally. God, we come to realize that some of our blessings are not being able to be appropriated in our life because of our own doing. Because we have been doing things not knowing how it affects our life, our relationship with you. Some of us, including myself, could be living under your eyes, your judgment because of the lack of knowledge. But God, I pray that for us who can humble ourselves and come to you, oh God, in fasting and prayer, for cloth and ashes. And asking, oh God, to forgive us and restore us. We know that you are loving enough to do that. And we do not want to take your love and your goodness for granted. But God washes another time in your blood. Have to raise us in a blood that will shed and calvary for us. Oh God, we realize that we need you more than ever as we journey through this barren land. Oh God, I bring to you at this time, Germany, stars. Father, you knew her from the very foundation of the earth. Oh God, you watched her form in her mother's womb. You created her for a purpose. Oh God, tomorrow she has a procedure, oh God, that you knew from she was conceived. Nothing surprises you, so God, I pray that you will hold the hands of the surgeon, the nurses, whoever has anything to do with her tomorrow will be overshadowed by you. Father, I pray for River. So God, this young boy, brilliant young man whom you have so designed that God, as his issue comes to the forefront, the Lord, he will reach down your wounded hand and touch him from the crown of his head to the soul of this human. We pray for full recovery. Father, I pray for this lady whom you know, Lord, who have aligned herself with this church and with my family, who has done the procedure yesterday. We pray for speedy recovery of her body. We pray also for her salvation. That God, she too, will come to know you. Father, continue to work on Nicole, oh God, Sister Jones' daughter. That she's feeling much better, Lord. We thank you for what you have already done. And Father, we pray that you will continue working on her, especially on her soul. We pray for her salvation. Father, come and tell it in your hand, remember Sister Dino, Morgan, Sister Paulette Jones. Oh God, remember them. Sister Gray, Sister Iris. Oh God, Russell, Avis. Adasamani. Verno, what she's saying. Oh God, Dion, Paul said. Father God, you know all the persons that need a touching you. And we leave them in your very care. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, we offer all of these in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good night Pastor Gerald, good night everyone.
Good night Sister Joan.
Good night everyone.
Good night, Sister Joan.
Night, the attorneys, Sister Joan.
Good night, good night.
Yeah, have a blessed night everyone.
Yeah, good night to everyone too.
Good night Pastor.
Good night, good night.
Night everyone.
Good night everyone, good night, good night, good night.
Good night Sister Gray.
Have a good night, Ray.
Good night.
Pastor, you have Russell in prayer here.
Good night Russell.
Good night Pastor.
Sister Rodney Jones, good night.
Good night Pastor. How are you?
I'm good, I'm good.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, did you guys, did you take a mango from Sister Pat Campbell?
Oh, we're going to meet up, so I might, I might soon get mango.
Pastor Willie, why are you doing that to me?
Make sure Sister Jones get mango to bring for me, Sister Pat Campbell.
I'm eating any for you.
Oh, Sister Pat Campbell.
All right. Yeah, to Sister William for me.
I will, I will. Good night, everybody, good night, good night.
Night everyone, have a lovely sleep and a lovely dream. Good God, good night everyone.
Good night Pastor, Sister Morgan.
Sister Jay.
Good night Pastor, Sister Morgan.
Oh, Sister Ma.
Sister Morgan, good, good night, Sister Morgan.
Sister Dixon, good night, Sister, okay, Sister Thunder, Sister Lloyd, Sister May, good night. Sister Sam Brown. All right, I'm gonna shut it off now and I'm supposed to remember to stop the recording.